Listen to the audio.
Yeah.
Look, roast it.
I think so long way to help.
Yes. No nothing to do about that. All right, I'm gonna make it right.
Want somebody slap that in the floor? See your face? On cheek? I want somebody slap.
I try to remember that area. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's always a pleasure to be here in the afternoons. See you tomorrow. But again, I would like to welcome those of you who are so engrossed into what's going on in Georgetown County School District to our regular board work session meeting approximately 5:30 PM Tuesday, August 16, 2022. We would like everybody to stand for a moment of silence, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, when I say that amen, it's not reflective of anything. It has many meanings. And one of those is, "That's it."
And that's the end.
So for those of you who don't ever enter that thing we call a church, 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 it has multiple meanings, so much for that. So the newspaper, so that you won't rush back and sell them. Arthur's exciting prayers and all those. All right, next on the agenda we have right here is one of my favorite people, Mr. Marvin Neal. Today he's giving us some advice on hiring practices. Okay, Mr. Neal. What do we need to know or what have we done?
Good evening, Superintendent Price, Dr. Lance, fellow board members. I'm here today to just remind the board that the consent decree in 1997 distinguished a lot of hills that was going with this Georgetown County School District and things that was just going wrong from a discriminatory standpoint. One thing that stands out during this last interview of the principals and assistant principals in Georgetown, especially in the Waukesha area, where you only have one black between principals, assistant principals, and teachers. One black. So I guess she'll run from school to school and play Aunt Jemima, whoever needs to be played and stuff, to make sure a black child know that there's somebody exists in those four schools that sits out there. That should get your concern, everyone's concern. Diversity is necessary. And I think the opportunity was there to hire another black during the last interview process that was not qualified in Waukesha High School during the interview, but obviously got qualified when he went to Andrews for the same job description and the same interview process. I think it was the same process. But if it was not the same process, there needs to be some work done with that process. They definitely need to be looked after. Number two. My question is, can Carvis Bay have two blacks in those schools, high school and middle schools? Number three, you have schools with minority black students with two white assistant and principal. So there are some things that just not balance here when it comes to diversity. I asked this board that someone from this board that has an interest in the school district, what's happening here to sit in these interview process when it comes to staff, these principals, assistant principals, and teachers' positions. Someone needs to sit in on that because there needs to be some clarity. And the policy should govern fairness because obviously the policy don't do that right now. So something needs to be done about what's going on here. You should not have a pretty 50-50 black and white school district, yet still you're only looking at, well, the statistics say 36% minority. But minority to this school district mean Italians and everybody else thrown in it with the blacks. So if you're going to distinguish white in the distinction, when you talk about the ratio of personnel working here, you need to set black aside also. Distinguish that, and everything else I guess would be others. But we need to do that because Italians could carry themselves as white. I'm pretty sure when they apply here, they say white. They're not gonna say black. So they shouldn't be included with black. So I think we need to distinguish that differently. And if you're gonna include it with minority, I think you need to distinguish this is the percentage of blacks within this because my concern is black people and minority that's being disenfranchised. But let's distinguish black clearly so we understand what we are talking about. And last but not least, the interview process must be consistent across the board. Questions shouldn't be asked to one candidate and different questions asked to the other. It should be fair and consistent, especially when we deal with the principal interviews that we dealt with on the last go around because this is not fair what's going on here. And I charge Mr. Price and Dr. Lance and the school board to make that happen. We also need to look at the people that's leaving here. We had a very distinguished young lady that left the school district that really built the current technology education program here, Ms. LaParras Singleton. And I am very concerned about that move that she made because she was not happy, I must say that. She was not happy. There are some problems there. And I think someone needs to ask that question, what happened to LaParras Singleton? I served on that board since it started up until now. Something happened there because she was a happy camper in the beginning. No one should leave out of this school district in bad taste. Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neal.
Amen, Dr. Neal.
Next we have on the agenda approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion? Second. It's been moving probably second that we approve the minutes as presented.
I don't think we received.
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was a last question. But go ahead.
We did not, I don't think, I don't see the minutes in our package. I might be overlooking it.
We had a Google glitch, but I was having sent you.
Okay.
I thought I'd have.
Can we table that, make a motion, that we table that to our next meeting for the minutes?
And we just go through it with the necessary corrections?
I haven't seen them, so I can't vote on it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see them.
Has anybody else, did anybody else get the minutes?
Can we, can we just reverse the item F? Do that instead of D and then make DF? You said a few minutes, you're gonna get the minutes.
Yeah. It's moved, what you're requesting is move the approval of the minutes down after the action items?
Just change where it says adoption of agenda? Make that D? Then where it says approval of the minutes, make that E?
Yeah.
Oh, so just.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, and come back to it.
I don't really have any objections to that since I thought I got a second. But I guess I could pretend I never heard that. So for right now, approval of the minutes will be move. Or better still, we will not move anything yet, all right? We will drop down to we'll bypass it. We will drop down to adoption of the agenda. And if you want to suggest any movement in something, then just do it. If you want to suggest that we delete your motion, that we delete it till the next time, that's really not a big deal either, okay? So following that scenario, and I don't, you know, I don't know if anybody can jump up with a reason based on Robert rules that we can't get away with that. In any case, we're endowed down to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Question?
This is a, I think I heard you say, and I think I saw it listed on here, where it says this is a regular board work session meeting, okay? Now, we just started school and we don't have an executive session on here at all. And, you know, just sitting back, listening to some of the community members, I mean, there are several things here that I've heard through the grapevine that I knew nothing about, and a couple of them were substantiated because I made personal phone calls to the schools and saw some personnel issues, or I should say personnel appointments, that I was really shocked at that once again, never heard about it, never had the heads up. I heard it through the grapevine or the kudzu vine, whatever you want to call it. So I would like to make a motion that we have an executive session at the pleasure of the board for tonight because I think there are a number of issues that need to be addressed. And if not, then we definitely need one at our next session. But once again, Mr. Chair, a work session. You know, I came here just like everyone else, prepared to work, to discuss things, not just to get out of here, you know, about five minutes to six. I mean, that's wonderful if that's somebody's own agenda. But anyway, I think I've said, I think I made my point, okay? I'd like to have an executive session tonight if possible.
Okay, we have our suggested change on the adoption of the agenda. What you we have to vote on that, so what we need is a motion and a second, and then
You better check legally. Look, Lindsey's trying to jump up there.
Okay.
Ma'am.
Sure you.
So you're free to make a motion to amend the agenda after the meeting has started. But under FOIA, you would either, there's a couple of circumstances that you have to look at. First, if it's going to be an action, if it's going to be just a discussion upon which you plan to take no action, upon which no action can be taken, we only need a six-member vote majority, a six-member majority vote here tonight for that. If it's going to be something upon which final action could be taken and you would like to discuss that tonight and take final action, you would have to take two votes. One, that it's an emergency circumstance and an emergency taken, it just needs six of you to vote for an executive session to be added. If you believe that it is a final discussion where action will be taken, you have to have two votes, one that it's an emergency and two to add it to the agenda.
You said six members?
Yes.
Two thirds of them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, two thirds vote of the members voting, present and voting. And so just so we're clear and following those FOIA rules.
Let's do it.
He's just looking for conversation.
Second, don't leave.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Then just make a motion.
But just, I always like to FOIA, there will have, when it comes to lawyer.
Yes, sir.
Now, there are possibilities when you can't answer those questions that you just brought up just now in terms of whether or not this is going to occur and this is going to occur. You know, if it's in fact, we go back there and you know, after throwing some of these things off, the board is so alarmed that they want to take him here now.
Right. If you anticipate that to be an issue, then the motion needs to be worded such that it is descriptive and thorough enough to know what you would be discussing in executive session and to be able to decide on your own if you believe that that's something that you may want to take final action on tonight. And if you do want to take final action, even knowing that the discussion could go 10 different ways from Sunday, but as a possibility, I just want to make sure that we're not running afoul of FOIA in any way and just that we're as transparent and above board as possible, so. Again, if you think it's something that you may take final action on, then the motion needs to be worded very specifically, very thoroughly, so that you can decide, one, is it an exigent circumstance? And two, do you want to add it to the agenda?
Okay, let's say the vote.
I hope that's clear.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we have an executive session and discuss some personnel matters and policy matters.
I would prefer, and typically that would suffice for our description of an executive session, but simply for the issue of transparency and the issue of folks being able to decide whether they want to discuss that, can you elaborate any further without disclosing confidential personnel information? And I know that that's tricky.
No names now. Whatever you do.
No, I cannot, not publicly. That's why I'm asking for an executive session.
Well, you know, that can be, that can be the decision of the board. If you all feel that that any discussion of a personnel matter tonight is of an exigent circumstance, that if another board member feels that it's such a an emergency, I don't want, the term is emergency. I'm not saying that you're, you know, calling 911. I'm just saying that the term is emergency. If you feel that another board member believes that there's a matter that is of such a nature that needs to be discussed tonight, then that's your, that's your personal vote to give, whether six of you agree to that or not. And if you, if you can't be more specific without identifying information and that, it's tricky given that you're wanting to add a topic for executive session rather than for public session. So I kind of leave you to your own consciences here in whether, whether that's something that you would like to add to the agenda tonight. And if it is, again, something upon which final action can be taken, we would need the two votes, and then we would have to come out in public session after the executive session and share whatever the results of the final action are. Lots of steps involved.
You're doing your job, you're trying to keep them office, you know.
Just trying to, just trying to make sure that we're doing our best to stay in line.
There's a waiting to rush out of here.
I have a question for Dr. Kafara. This is not something that can wait two weeks?
It seems like, it seems like he's asking for a conversation, not so much a final discussion.
Okay, well, then conversation, I'm okay, yeah.
So if you're, if you're just seeking to have a conversation and you do not believe that there's a way that a final action could be taken on this tonight, that's going to bar you from taking any final action tonight. It's going to lock you into nothing but a discussion. Okay, so if it's not of such an exigent nature that a decision must be made tonight, then you can vote without saying it's an emergency, but with six or two thirds of you voting that you want to add that to the agenda tonight. But again, that locks you into no action being taken.
Right.
My second is motion.
Okay.
The motion has been made. Repeat it one more time for me.
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss personnel issues and policy issues and no action be taken in executive session.
And we had a second, right, Ms. Neal?
And that would be a policy as it relates to a specific personnel matter? Because otherwise a policy wouldn't fall into executive session.
No, no, it does not.
Okay, so perhaps just a specific personnel matter? And I'm not trying to be picky, I just don't want us to get on the wrong side of whoever's watching.
I certainly understand, and I appreciate very much your guidance and direction on this because it is tricky business.
It is, and there are always, always eyes watching, as some of our neighbors know. So I would narrow that then, I would exclude the portion about the policy and just have the personnel discussion for the executive session.
But get to what you guys want to.
We have a motion and we have a second.
All right, you have heard the motion, and it's been second. Now it's time to take the tricky part, a vote. All those in favor of having the executive session? Let it be known by, let's say, a show of hand on this one, all right? Okay, that means some folks want to hang around a little longer. So that's all right. So we have, what, that's eight?
Eight.
We have eight to one in favor. Those opposed, let it also be known by a show of hand. We have one. All right. So the motion is carried and the amendment is made on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now adoption of the agenda as amended. All those in favor, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? None, ayes have it. Agenda is finally in place. Personnel is the administration, okay. Back to the minutes, all right. That was the second thing on board. All right, approval of the amendments, approval of the minutes, I think was moved wrong in place of adoption of agenda. And we had a motion out there, that I guess it died out there. But again, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Do we have the minutes?
We have them.
Yeah, I see.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Here, I'll open it.
He hadn't had time to read it, though he might be. He might be one of those ones who want to
Actually, it wasn't long, it was that.
Want to do a thorough reading.
And that.
And that.
Okay.
While you're reading, you might want to remember that even after the minutes have been approved and gone on in the dust, you can always go back and bring them back if you find any mistakes. And they can still be changed, okay? It's not something that's in stone. Approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's been moving probably second that we accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Opposeds? Ayes have it. Motion is carried, and it's been approved. Now we get to these action items. We have personnel list, Dr. Milton, Mr. Jenkins. Administration recommends the approval of the personnel list as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Question? Yes, ma'am.
Are we filled up with teachers? You know, I'm gonna answer that.
Good evening, Dr. Lance, members of the board, Mr. Price. I will say that you see on your personnel list that there were two rescinded recommendations. If those wouldn't have happened with the interviews that we did today, hopefully we would be 100% full. But right now, we have those two vacancies that we are still actively looking. And we interviewed for Art today, but we do have a possibility of somebody that may come out of retirement to fill that position.
Do we have substitutes filling in?
Yes, ma'am, there is somebody in every classroom.
I would like to applaud the work of the HR department. I mean, if you look at the districts around us who are still have positions to be filled, this is incredible.
Thank you, and then the shout out also goes to school administration because we do have to work hand in hand to get this job done. But thank you.
Enjoy the glory, okay? Yeah, that's, that's, that's something. I have to agree with him that, I mean, that's, talking to people, this, this, is something, you've got hundreds of teachers, some of the larger district in the state, you know. I don't see how they survive. And teachers still walking away, if you step on their toes too swiftly. So you might want to remember that now. I'm not saying to love them to death, but put them at love of the teachers now. Treat them fair, firm, and show them some love. Because if you lose one, you might not have another one for the rest of the year.
That's true.
So much for that. So again, the ministry recommends the approval of the personnel list as presented. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? None, ayes have it. Motion is carried. Now we have out of district, the Baron who the administration recommends approval of Georgetown County residence requests for lease from Georgetown County School District for the 2022, 2023 school year. You ready to request, motion?
I moved.
Second. It has been moving probably second. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. Now is information item. We have school safety overview.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Price. We wanted to give you an update tonight on some of the things we've done this summer. We're always looking for ways that we can improve our safety program. And so we want to give you an update of a few of the things we've done and a few of things that are in the works tonight. So I want to start off with, Mr. Price took a leadership role in this this summer and convened a meeting of our law enforcement agencies. And so this was the top level command staff folks of the Georgetown County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Weaver, Georgetown Police Department. I think Chief Pierce was out of town, but Major Brown and their command staff were there. And so we discussed these various items on here because we wanted to have their input and make sure that we were following their guidance and direction in the way we're carrying things out. As you know, probably our best news of all to report to you is that we started school yesterday. As you know, probably our best news of all to report to you is that we started school yesterday with a full-time, uniformed, Class 1 Police Officer, SRO, in every school. And to me, that was just a godsend that we were able to get those grants and get that in place. And all those positions are filled. So, we did some active, they wanted to work on active shooter training, we'll tell you a little bit more about that in a moment.
I'm sorry, Ms. Walters, you just said that the SROs are in all schools, full-time? All day, is that what you're saying?
Yes sir, the only, the only facility that does not have one is Howard and because it's not, it doesn't fit the definition of a full-time school because they don't have 180-day students in there. So on that, we rely on the police department, off-duty people, when we can get them to work. Their staffing shortages are such that it's difficult to fill those slots sometimes.
Alright, because I think we did have a discussion about that at one time about safety at Howard. Do you recall that?
Yes sir, and what, and so, an administrative monitor was hired for that position with some of the savings that came from not having to use off-duty officers in elementary schools. They felt that that was a better alternative because an administrative monitor or staff person has more latitude to do some things than a police officer does. For instance, like if you need to search somebody, police officers have to have probable cause. Whereas, as you know from your time as a principal, for us, the Fourth Amendment stops in the road and school staff can make them turn out their pockets, empty their book bags and such. So it gave them more flexibility and also being in the city like it is, the response time is quick. They walk through on a regular basis over there, so we think it's covered as best as can be covered.
We do have a person over there at Howard.
We do have, we do have Mr. Milton over there who was hired to be the administrative monitor for it. And so, his primary duties are assisting with security and discipline.
And along those same lines, Mr. Walters, Mr. Price. I would like to see or suggest that from time to time, because there was so much concern from the, from the adults in that building at Howard about safety, that you do a periodic check, you know, and make sure that they feel safe and everything's going well there.
And members of my entire team, we all make regular visits over there as well. In fact, for the last few weeks of the last school year, Mr. Barber was over there pretty much every day until we could get the administrative monitor situation straight. So we definitely monitor and maintain our presence over there as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And if I may jump in, Dr. Kaffar to respond to that, absolutely. And you may recall that we did a presentation last year that we were trying to redo and redesign the format and the experience for students on their, their daily attendance at Howard Alternative. And so, we've initiated that this year, and so we will have regular attendance and regular visits to make sure things are flowing well with the new format. So we will have regular visits there, yes sir?
Thank you, sir.
And so, the other pieces we covered in this meeting were threat assessment. As we've told you before, now that there is a state law in place that each school has to have a threat assessment team. Now the state has started back with the trainings for it and that law enforcement officers, SROs, should be part of it. And so, we discussed how they're going to be integrated into that. Also with facility assessment, we have different levels of facility assessments. We have a self-assessment that the principal and their staff completes. We have another assessment that comes through my department that we go through and complete. And now that we've got the SROs in there, they're going to be doing their own assessment. Always good to have multiple sets of eyes looking at things and also each one of these different groups looks at it with a different perspective. So, one group might pick up something that the other one may not. And then the last thing we covered in this meeting is that every year, we update our emergency operations plan. And so, that's a requirement by the state as well, we now have to submit those to the state. And so, what we do with that, we follow the guidance that, there's a FEMA template for emergency operations plans that fits in with the National Incident Management System as far as specific plans, also what's called hazard annexes to deal with particular situations, kind of like the old flip charts you used to have in schools, is that same type of thing. But we submit these to our law enforcement agencies, our fire departments and EMS, and we ask them to review all of them and see if there's anything we've overlooked that they want us to address. So we went through that process, we made a few tweaks to it, and so that's now gone out.
Question before you move on.
Yes ma'am.
With the threat and the facility assessments that you have multiple stakeholders taking part in, how often will you be doing that?
Well, there's actually, it's a monthly assessment, it has to be filed too from the school. So the school does that monthly, that generates lots of work orders from Mr. Davis. But, yeah, they file that in our Safe School System.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With SRO officers in the school, there is a specific training they go through and working with in schools?
There is, and you know, this is a big change from back in the day. I first got involved with SROs back in the 90s at the police department when the first grants came out and, you know, back in the days of there, for instance. But now, a law was passed a few years ago that they have to have specialized training. It's either a three-week course at Criminal Justice Academy or they have to go through NASRO, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers, their training program in order to be certified to do that. Now what that certification does in addition, I mean, it's really a specialized niche of law enforcement now, just like being a detective or a narcotics agent or anything like that. But with that certification too, they have statewide jurisdiction. So in those instances where we send them to a state championship game or something, to escort a team or something. They have the same authority in that county as a deputy sheriff in that county has. So it's lots of good reasons to do it, but professional standards is the biggest piece of that.
And there are daily routines, that they're checking all the doors frequently throughout the day, all entrances to schools and classroom teachers' doors, making sure they are locked.
They do that, they also work on interacting, and we'll talk about this more in a minute when we get to it too, when we had our training session with them. We held our own training with them, we do that each year and cover some of these things. So if you don't mind, maybe I can hold that and when we get to that one.
I was about to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
And maybe he asked part of it, because I was going to ask you to kind of enlighten us a little bit on what the facility assessment consists of. So maybe you're going to cover that in a minute.
Well, we can, we can get into that now and we might get back to it. So what the facility assessment does, the one, the self-assessment they have is a nine-page checklist. And so, you're looking at everything from outdoors to sidewalks to lights to, are the shrub re-pruned? Are there any trip hazards? Is there proper signage out there that's directing people to the one primary entrance? Inside the building, it's looking at light fixtures, looking at plumbing fixtures. Is there anything in the hallways, broken tile or anything that could be a hazard to somebody? Do all the doors function properly? We have a lot of electronic access control doors and we also go around looking too and make sure they don't have those wood blocks or a brick or whatever, trying to prop open doors. So all of that's covered in that piece. And then, we look for pretty much the same things. The SROs are looking for that too, but they're also looking at it from the standpoint of really a tactical thing, if you will. If something happens, how do I respond to get to that room, how do I get into that room? That we'll come back to in a minute. And then the monthly report is kind of a follow-up to that big survey, is making sure that all of the things we said we did in the summer are still correct each month. That door didn't break last week and nobody put in a work order for it. You know, that was allegedly one of the issues in Texas, that a door was broken and nobody put in a work order. So it kind of helps have a system of checks and balances as well. Can I answer your question, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
So this was a training we held. We've learned a lot in the past year from the incidents that happened in Orangeburg, in Greenville, obviously in Uvalde, on reunification training. Now, I don't know if any of you have signed up yet for the Risky Business Insurance Seminar in Hilton Head, but this program that we use was created by the I Love You Guys Foundation. And John Michael Keys and his wife Ellen started that because their child was killed in a school shooting. And they said, "We don't know tactics" and all this other stuff. What we do know is that all of these plans that were out there were overly elaborate, had a lot of lingo and language that was difficult to use. And so, they set about a way to change that. So John Michael's actually going to be our keynote speaker at that conference in October. So if you haven't met him before, he's somebody you really want to hear. But what came up with the standard unification method was, was that there were so many different ways of trying to do this, is that how do we make it systematic and how do we make it in a manner that anybody can come use it? So what this does, and this is what this training was, we had people from here in this building, because if something's happening in the school, we can't be pulling people out of that school or other schools to work on this. We had law enforcement present, and then we also have parts in recreation, because you know, they're right next door. If we were to use this site as a reunification site, and we probably would in some cases, then they would be at the gym, you know, we could bring kids, you know, buses on that side, put them in the gym, they would help with that. Parents in here, and then there's a process. And so, each one of the jobs in this process comes with its own notebook, but it also comes with a little card that's got the details of what that job is, there's four or five bullet points on it. So that, you know, if somebody who's assigned a specific job happens to be out that day, we've got people that are cross-trained, they can pull that card out, so okay, here's what I do, and we can plug them in. So you got to have more than Plan A anymore, it's got to be Plan B, C, and D. So that's what this training was, this was the first group that went through the overall training. We'll look later in the fall, probably do a second one for folks we did not get through the first one. And then we're going to come back and have little micro-trainings. And so, folks that we've identified for these specific things, whether it's a greeter, whether it's somebody who's checking in, a parent, but actually go through those things with them and so that they're comfortable in carrying out that task on that day. But it's, it's a really great system that they've got and it's, that's why it's adopted all over the country. Before we leave that too, our standard response protocol, you've probably seen the signs and the posters everywhere. One of the issues that came up in the conversations that we've had with I Love You Guys over the years is this confusion about what's a lockout and what's a lockdown. And it's a term that gets thrown about interchangeably. And as you know, that they're, they're two separate things. A lockout was when something was outside the building, a potential threat. That's when you bring people in, make sure the outer doors are locked, but go about your business. Lockdown was when somebody was inside the building. Well, there was so much confusion, the terms were being used improperly in a lot of things, either communications from some schools in some instances across the country, sometimes in the media. So they went back and took out lockdown and changed it to secure and hold. And so, hold is pretty much if it's class change time and something's going on, a medical emergency or something, just hold them in the classroom till it's straightened out and resolved. Secure is what we used to think of as lockdown, if something's going on outside, bring everybody in, make sure the doors are locked, and then go on with your business. So it kind of differentiated between what was two levels of a lockout, getting rid of the term and making it more specific to what the actions are. So we conduct, we conducted the training after we had that meeting. And so what you see here, this is the sheriff's office. And so, we had one training in July at Kensington Elementary, we had another training last week at Wacom Mall Middle. You can see all of our new SROs went through it with a lot of other officers. And Criminal Justice Academy put on this training for them. And what they look at with this is, if you're the first person that shows up at the school where there's an incident going on, you go in, you don't wait for somebody else to get there. And so that's what this training was, is they went through these various drills and then at the end of the day, in these hallways here, we'd had it set off, we had stuff on the floor because we were trying to create that auditory exclusion. You know, when the adrenaline gets going, you get where you can't see, you get tunnel vision, so it had loud music blaring, lights flashing, all these distractions, they had to go in, listen, identify, and eliminate the threat. So the officers all said that they loved it because it's as close to realistic probably as you can get for them. And it gets their blood pressure up, it gets the adrenaline pumping, and so they were very pleased with it and we were happy we could host it for them. With the police department, we did four separate trainings with them over at Georgetown High School. As you know, the high school has some unique complications, it's our only building that has a second story on it. So we had to work with them and their instructors on how do you negotiate stairwells and how do you do if you've, because the city's a much more compact place, you might have more officers arriving at once. So you may have a single officer response, but if you've got four showing up, who's going to take the lead, direct the others, and pretty much come what was called an immediate action plan on how you're going to respond to that. So I think those were very productive trainings for them too. And being able to do it in the environment that it was in is always helpful. They get to go down those hallways and go in those classrooms. And a lot of their newer officers really hadn't had time to get into the school yet. Our SRO training we held last week, and so you can see, and it's so nice to see a room full of them, they're all hours in our schools now. And so, Ms. Thompson came over, gave a legal briefing. One of the things we're required to do, we did in our principals' meeting, was they get a copy of the SRO contract. The SROs get a copy of the contract, so everybody knows the rules to the game. And probably the key piece of that is, is that SROs are not there to enforce discipline. They're not there to be your substitute car rider person if somebody's not available, or your recess duty person. Now, they may be out there, they may be recess, lunch, whatever, but they can't be there exclusively for that reason to replace somebody else. Mr. Gaskins?
Are they employees of Georgetown County School District or are they employees of the sheriff's department?
They are not, they are employed by their agency.
By their agency.
And so, the way it breaks down is this, our middle school and high school SROs, we have a contract, memorandum of understanding contract, and we pay for the services of those, we pay their salaries and benefits, they provide the cars, uniforms, training and such. The ones we got through the grant, the Department of Public Safety sends that money directly to the agency. So we have, we don't even touch any money with that, but that requirement is that they have a memorandum of understanding with us. It basically mirrors the ones we have with the middle and high school SROs, it just says that it's paid for by DPS.
And they answer to their agency?
They answer to their agency. If there's an issue with an SRO, we go to the chief or sheriff with it, but there's a process outlined in that contract how that gets to be dealt with. So, it's about eight pages long. And it specifies what we're supposed to do, what they're supposed to do. But what was found out a few years ago was that chiefs and sheriffs and superintendents were signed to contracts and principals and SROs didn't know the rules of the game. So now it's required that they be provided each year with a copy of the current contract.
So that the agency actually comes in and supervises, makes sure they are doing what they're supposed to be doing?
They do, we have input into that. I have liaisons of both departments that I would deal directly with if we have an issue. Mr. Price has the authority, if he has a concern, to go directly through the chief or sheriff if something needs to happen immediately with it. So there, yes, sir, you want to elaborate?
Yes, sir, and in our meeting this summer that we had with representatives from the sheriff's office and the police department, one of the things that they asked for was a more systematic way of getting feedback from school-level administrators. So they are actually working on creating a form that we will issue to all of our school administrators so that they can also provide feedback and input on the working relationship with their SRO.
And they would discuss that with the SRO before it gets submitted. I mean, it's not like a secret evaluation or anything, but it's a positive feedback form in trying to make sure that they have a good working relationship, but both have to know where the boundaries lie.
Yes, sir, my question was, who monitors, you know, the SRO because it's been told that they sit in the car, on the cell phone, kind of lackadaisical, nobody wants to tell on the police, you know, so, you know. So they need to have some accountability as far as who monitors them, you know?
Well, their, their own supervisors come through schools and check on them as well. And in fact, you probably noticed this week, we've had a very good law enforcement presence around all of our schools in addition to the SROs.
And it's a lot of ground to cover.
It's a lot of ground to cover, you know, we do that as part of our job and of course, you know, they know and we know too, that nice camera system we've got, it can tell us where they were and what they were doing and when. So it's, it's another way that, you know, we don't get a lot of complaints about them. And like you say, it may be reluctance on people's part to do it, but there is a process with both agencies that any complaints that get filed with them, that they're, they get documented and they get investigated. Any of those complaints that come to us, I turn over to my liaison so they can implement that process. The second piece of, yes ma'am, Ms. Ford, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I have a question about their training. I know a few years ago, there were some issues with SROs in other counties. I know a few years ago, there were some issues with SROs in other counties, and you mentioned that they don't get involved with discipline, but if they were to be involved with discipline, do they, are they trained in how to deal with children, with children who have?
That's the specialized training they get, is part of that three weeks, a big part of that is de-escalation techniques, they cover there, we covered in this as well, is that, you know, we have a significant special needs population, and so the methods of communication that you might normally use may not work, they might not have the cognitive ability to understand. So that's part of that training, and that'll be part of ongoing training with them as well. So you'll also see in that picture Ms. Najah Black, who's an assistant solicitor who handles all juvenile cases in Georgetown County, and so she probably spent a good hour reviewing law with them about what to charge, what not to charge, what they look for, if they have to prosecute a case, you know, has all other possible resolutions been dealt with before you get to actually having the issue of juvenile summons? Because that's the last thing that we want to get involved with as a school. Can it be handled as discipline? Our administrators know that if they've got a question about, is this discipline or is it something more, they're the folks that make that decision. Our folks, our administrators aren't trained to make legal decisions about whether something's criminal or not. So that was also discussed with them as well, but Ms. Black went through the various alternatives, you know, one in particular, for instance, is, you may not have heard this, you can't charge a juvenile anymore with disorderly conduct for something that happens in a school. There was a federal case about that, and, you know, it's so broad and vague, you gotta find something more specific that addresses whatever the action was, and made it rise to the level of wanting to file a charge against somebody. So, you know, and disturbing school law got changed a few years ago, that it does not apply to students now, only to non-students who do some sort of act on a campus. So, you know, they understand now, and she did a good job of covering that with them, is not only the things you can and should do, but things that you should not do. And then we went over a lot of the details of stuff that, you know, like we just talked about with looking around the facilities, if you find a problem with a door or something, who do you contact to get something done with it, how does it get documented, some of the day-to-day basics, and also, and them working with, not only their administrators, you know, I told them, I said, as soon as you leave your new principal's office, your next best friend in that building's gonna be a nurse, you need to go get in her good graces, because they deal with a lot of kids, and a lot of the ones that may have issues usually will wind up in a nurse's office. So that was, it was very productive training for them, they're all very bright, they're very dedicated to it, I mean, they made a commitment to do that particular job, to do it, it's not somebody that got drafted, or, you know, that we need to find somewhere to put this person, these are folks that said, hey, I wanna work with kids and I wanna be in a school.
Mr. Otters?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, actually to you, Mr. Price, under the brilliant head sitting down looking at me, what happens, almost teachers, let's, let me get in the background, as part of our discipline policy, those words that he just mentioned, like disturbing the peace, disorderly conduct, are those still in our policy?
So the policy has been changed, so it used to be a Level 2 offense was called disorderly conduct, and so that got changed, now it's called behavioral misconduct, because it's focusing on behavior and not being confused with a criminal offense. So, and a couple of other quick examples, larceny is a crime, it's Level 3. There can be stealing, this is Level 2, you know, if somebody steals a pencil off your desk, we're not gonna call the SRO in on that, but it may be something that requires disciplinary action. So it's keeping options open, that the principals have a way to deal with these things as a disciplinary matter, the same way between assault and battery, which is a Level 3 criminal offense, and fighting, you know, some of these things, the SRO looks at it, they are very good in discussing these things with parents before they make a decision about filing charges, because especially in some of these fight situations, there might be more to the story than what the students are saying, the parents may know more of what's going on outside of school with it, and so they take into consideration the parent's wishes when they make a decision about charging or not, many times if the parent, if somebody says they don't wanna pursue it, it just winds up being a disciplinary matter as opposed to something that gets charged. You wanna help with that a little bit?
I just wanted to just quickly add in, because it does sound like it's simply a semantics change, the difference between disturbing schools and behavioral misconduct, that sounds very similar, but it's not, it's not been a semantics change. There have not been any charges for disturbing schools, first off, because they're not permitted to be charged with that any longer. And then within the discipline matrix, there are examples of what constitutes behavioral misconduct. So it, because the term disorderly conduct or disturbing schools, those were so large and overly broad and vague, we now have very specific examples of what constitutes behavioral misconduct. So it wasn't simply a semantics change, I think we've, I think y'all did a very good job of complying with the spirit of that case, that federal case that came down.
And let me add this, too, Dr. Lance, Dr. Giles is leading a group right now of school-level folks, district-level folks, and we are currently re-examining the current discipline policy to see if we need to make any other adjustments to it, but also, how is it being used? Is it being used properly as well? You know, just handing somebody something and here it is, but let's look at how they're doing it, let's, she's pulling up data on records for how many types of referrals there are, what the referrals are for. So it's, she's putting, she's leading a group that's putting a lot of time and effort into it.
While I'm visiting the schools, if one of those teachers walk up to me and start talking to me about disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, I need to tell him to get out of my face then, huh?
Well, you need to tell him to talk with the principal and the SRO.
The thing I'm saying that is, you know, it's, when you first make these policies, they are out there for eons, and people have been, hands have been almost trained to write those two words. So inevitably, some of them are, they're still probably doing it, so you might wanna teach, tell those principals to be a little more vigilant when they start looking for it, because people are gonna write, all right? Because it's been in the policy for so long, and it's been utilized for centuries, all right?
Well, our current, our current discipline policy, I believe Ms. Thompson can correct me, is 2019, and that includes, I think it's J I C D A dash E, is like the chart they use that has the list of offenses and possible consequences on it. So it's almost kind of like a cheat sheet.
I don't have to worry about hearing that buzzing in my ears all the time.
Yes, sir. Now, a couple of things that we're working on right now, some new things, you've probably heard about these, a lot of school districts are implementing them, and so we currently have an order in, this is a weapons detection system, it's different from our metal detectors. You know, our metal detectors, you have to enter your pockets, somebody has to search your bag, you go through, we find a lot of vapes that way, for instance. What these devices do, and this is something we can use not only in our middle schools and high schools, but particularly our sporting events. So with that clear bag policy, this uses artificial intelligence, and so while it also detects mass of metal, it also has oodles of different shapes and sizes of things that are potentially weapons stored in it, and so using that artificial intelligence, it scans that as the person goes through and can set off something, hey, this person needs to be checked more deeply, but it also allows a lot more people to go through a lot more quickly. Now, like I say, it's not gonna catch fingernail clippers and necessarily every little tiny small item, that's why it's called a weapons detection system as opposed to a metal detector. So this will be a tool that will help our schools potentially do more screenings, because this won't be, it's not as slow, it's not as intrusive, and, but it will be a supplement, we're not gonna stick the metal detectors in the corner and not use them anymore either, that they're still a very important part of that security strategy. So these are on order, we don't have a date yet, because I think everybody wanted them, and they didn't, like everything else with the supply chain. Yes, ma'am.
How much are they?
I think a set of those is about $2,500, and we ordered enough to cover the middle schools and high schools, so it was a pretty significant investment.
I think they'll put it in Howard as well?
They've got metal detectors over there, and we'll probably just continue to use those every day, because frankly, I kinda like the, given some of the, we have a lot of issues over there with cell phones, it's probably the biggest thing, they'll try to hide them in their shoe, you know, they come in limping and to get, pull the shoe off, and they got a phone stuck in there. So if we get to a point, if Mr. Clark and Dr. Anderson feel like that that may work better for them, certainly we can put one with them as well.
This, is it functional, even if you guys not set up at the door, it's just there at all time when anybody walks through the door?
So what they do is, you see how it's set up right there, and they have batteries that they run on, somebody has to monitor it, you've still gotta have a person at a table, so if you, if somebody sets off those green lights on the top, turn red, you gotta pull them aside and then go through winding into their pockets and such, but you also can move people through a lot faster without having to have that line build up behind them.
I was thinking more of a school like Howard, you know, a lot of different adults, youngsters comes through, I just feel like it need to be something that I could self-monitor, and maybe send off something to the office saying, look, need to check these people coming in the door.
No, you can't use these sort of things as self-monitoring, the next thing I'm gonna tell you about, though, that we're looking at, too, and we're probably gonna look at, I think we've got Howard on that list for that as well, in middle schools and high schools, is, we'll go ahead and move over to that, is called a halo sensor system. And so the middle schools and high schools and Howard, what it does...
Leave that up?
Yes, sir.
So what's, that last?
The last one there?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Detection system, I'm always curious, who makes that?
So that is made by a company called Chia, and that's the same people who make our metal detectors. So there's really basically two big vendors out there right now, Chia, and the other one's called Evolve, but their price structure is different, they want to lease you their stuff, and it, one, we're familiar with these folks, and we've got, had good service from the stuff we bought from them, but the other one, we would not be able to get nearly as many units if we had gone with them as we're getting this way. So the halo sensors, what they do is, they will go into restrooms, and they can detect particulate matter, so they can pick up like vape smells, THC, air quality changes, so if you got a carbon monoxide issue, or somebody tries to burn something in there. And then the other thing it does, that's pretty neat, too, is that, you know, we can't listen in on people, certainly not in the restroom, but it can detect abnormal changes in noise levels. So if somebody's in there and they start yelling about the fight, or as Mr. Evans pointed out when we were looking at this, he said, yeah, if they're trying to tear the sink off or TikTok, that'll pick them up, too, making all that noise. So any abnormal rise in noise levels, this is tied into our camera system, and we'll sound alert through that, that eighth grade boys restroom issue going on. There's another option that we're gonna have to look at once we get these in, that we could potentially also tie this into our radio system. So, but we'll have to investigate that further once we get it in place. But these, too, are getting to be where they're fairly common anymore. It's another tool, because it's hard to have staff that can monitor those restrooms and actually see what's going on in there. I deliberately did not put a picture of what one of these looks like on there, we don't wanna give that away, because they'll target them if we do. So, but we're excited about that, we're trying to get the wiring schedule in place now, I think the actual devices are here, but the wiring subcontractor's gotta get that schedule in place, and then hopefully we'll have these in relatively soon. One of the things we picked up from these cases, and especially from Texas, and this was not a huge investment, is that we train our teachers and our students that if school's in lockdown, you turn out the lights, you get in the corner, you don't open the door for anybody, and then, as we saw in some of these incidents, the first responders had trouble getting into the classrooms. So people inside aren't gonna let you in, they've gotta find a way to get in, so if, you know, your principal, your building manager, whoever is involved in the incident, they might have trouble finding keys to actually get into the classroom. And so this is a lockbox, it's Bluetooth-enabled, so we're gonna be putting one of these in a location in each front office, that our first responders will have access to it, they will have a punch code, if somebody gets there and the adrenaline's pumping and they can't remember their punch code, me or the members of my team can go on our phones and open it for them from the phone, so there's a backup plan to the code as well, and a set of master keys will be in there for each school. Again, you hope it's not something you need, but, you know, if the principal's Plan A, the building manager's Plan B, this'll give us a Plan C. Wanted to give you a quick update, and Mr. Stuckey's here with us tonight, he and Mr. Barber are certified Ovea's instructors, and they've been working exceptionally hard with our schools on this anti-bullying program. But this is not a safety department program, this is a school program. And so each school has its own committee, they go out, they train the committee, they provide the Ovea's materials, schools conduct surveys, they use that to tailor the Ovea's program to what their needs are in that school. And so right now, the middle schools, they've got completed, they're working on the elementary schools now for this year, and then the idea now is that they'll start training high schools this year to work towards implementation next year. So it's not a quick process, it's not an easy process, but it's a very important process, and one that's been proven. So it's also, even though it came out of Europe, it's actually based at Clemson University, so that's where they went to get their certifications on it. Mr. Stuckey, did I leave anything out?
Well, I just wanna say real quick that I think it should be known that everybody has to understand that bullying is a negative behavior, unwanted, but every unwanted negative behavior is not a bullying issue. A lot of people don't understand that, that's very, very important. I think it's just as bad to label a kid as a bully, and he's not a bully, you're gonna get negative results on that, it's just that simple. I can't tell you the phone calls, emails we get from time to time about bullying issues, and everyone's investigated on its own merits. Whatever the results are, those are the results, if it's a bullying situation, horse playing, assault, it is what it is, but every negative behavior is not a bullying situation. People have to understand that. Thank you.
So, and they're doing a great job with this program, getting it out there in the schools. Next thing I wanna talk about, and I always like to bring this up, even though we've had it in place a couple of years now, is our Stop It app. So you can go on the district website, there's a link to it on there, you can download the app from the Apple Store, Google Play. On the website, each school has a unique access code, parents with kids in multiple schools can enter as many schools as they want on there. But what this does is, it gives us the ability to, not only can they make a report, they could upload pictures or documents to it, we have a way that we can respond back to them that does not compromise their anonymity. That's a key piece they found out in these reporting, if people think you're gonna figure out who they are by responding to them, they're not gonna report anything. There's a crisis text line link on there as well. I can tell you that I know it works, because we've already had two reports that came in, and so people are, they know it's there, they're using it, but for our new parents, for people that haven't taken advantage of it yet, we wanna remind them that this is a great tool out there. And then the last thing I wanna talk about, we talked about a lot of stuff so far tonight, and we've talked about some people doing it, but I wanna end on what's the most important piece of our school's safety program. And it's not the safety department, it's not the district staff, it's our people, it's the building manager who sees that that door is kinda hanging up a little bit and worried it might not shut every single time and files a work order. It's the teacher who has a relationship with a student, and they know that that student hasn't been acting normally, and finds out that maybe they've been having some dark thoughts, and maybe we need to see if we can get them to a counselor. It's our students, it's the ones that not only use the app, but the ones who have a trusting relationship with their school administrator, that they feel comfortable letting them know, hey, I heard there might be trouble in the restroom during the next class change. It's our custodial staff, our nurses, it's our parents who monitor social media and report something, and they see the latest TikTok challenge is gonna drive us all crazy with some... with some idea this not only illegal, but probably dangerous as well. But when they reach out and they reported, they're part of our safety team. That's, this is what makes our program successful. And so we're gonna continue to strive to do all we can to keep our schools, our students and our staffs safe. But we need our extended team, all the people that you see represented in this slide, to continue to be a part of our team. Yes, sir.
We're getting ready to have football season, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, what made me uncomfortable as a principal was when we had like five or six officers, you know, assigned to the game, and there's four of them standing in the corner. Now, I respect the police, I love the police, I'm so happy that they came to the games. But most of the trouble that ever started was when our fans, well, I say the home team fans, had to walk over to the visitor's side over there and start, you know, using different fingers to the crowd and yelling out things and so forth. If there was a police officer over there, that wouldn't happen. The other trouble spot is the parking lot. I worked at a school in North Carolina, we had a playoff game. Nobody worked the parking lot. And what happened was when the game was over, we lost, we were the home team, there were about 15 cars out there that had tires slashed. And if there would have been somebody out there, you know, just patrolling or just had the car. So, so what I'm saying is, please, and it makes a principal feel uncomfortable. It made me very uncomfortable to tell or ask the police, could you please, you know, disperse and stand over here, you stand over here, you know, that sort of thing. But it's important.
Well, it is important, Dr. Cafaro, and so, you know, Friday nights, usually Mr. Stuckey, Mr. Barber, myself, we're out and not only are we looking at conditions, we're looking at what officers are doing. And so, you know, there's always a super, so when we do a law enforcement presence for a football game, we use your example. So their basic plan is, is that there's gonna be a number of officers decide to the home side. There's gonna be at least one on the visitor's side. There's gonna be one in the area of the restrooms. And if it's also in the area, the gate and concession stand in restrooms, in those areas, there's somebody that needs to be there and somebody in the parking lot. Now typically, you know, if I go to a game and I see him ganged up, I'll give him a couple of minutes, they may be discussing something that's going on. But if it looks like they're critiquing how the game's going, then, yeah, I walk over there and say, how y'all doing? And usually they'll, or if they don't, I get hold of the SRO, because typically they're the ones that are in charge of the detail for the game. And they, you know, they know too, it doesn't look good when the public sees them like that. So they're aware of that too. But yeah, that's, that's on our radar.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Speaking of upcoming games, I've been hearing about clear bag policy, but we don't have a clear bag.
For athletic events, we do. So we implemented that a couple of years ago. And so that makes it a lot easier to get people through the gate faster, because usually we're using wands out there. For, these new devices are gonna make that a lot simpler. If there's something in that clear bag that looks out of place, we still have a right to stop them and look in it. But most of our folks have been pretty good about it. Usually what happens at the gate is, is somebody's just coming from work and they forgot, they got their pocket knife stuck in their pocket. Then they want our folks to hold it, and we said, oh, no, because then it's gonna be grandpa's 100-year-old knife or something. So we just take it back to the car. But yeah, it's gonna hopefully get easier to do that. Now, as far as the schools, clear bag policies are a school-level decision on those. The thing about screening students with clear bag policies is, if they've got clothes or whatever stuff in that clear bag, kinda defeats the purpose of being able to see what's in there, so that can go either way.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate the support. And certainly you've extended to us over the years as we try to look for new and creative ways to keep our schools, teachers, staff and students safe. Thank you.
Thank you for that short overview.
That was good, that was very good. Good presentation.
No, you did a good job. All right. Next, we have lead policies, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Jenkins. I know they're gonna be brief, right?
Very, very, this is, this is about as uninteresting as it comes. Chairman Lance, members of the board, Mr. Price. We have just a couple of changes that have been discussed that we would like to bring to you all for a vote at the next meeting for two different policies. The first one is regarding our sick leave bank. We, mostly Mr. Price's suggestion after meeting with lots of staff members across the district, felt like we needed to loosen the reins a little bit on the sick leave bank regulations. And we looked at a lot of different options of things that we could do to make it more accessible to more employees. And what we kind of came down to are just some real simple changes. First, employees have always had to have been employed for a full year before being eligible for the sick leave bank. And now we're making it so that you are eligible for the sick leave bank as soon as you have accrued six sick leave days. So that speeds up the process usually to about your first semester of work with the district, rather than a full year. And then we also plan to, would like to propose at least, to open, two open enrollment periods for the sick leave bank per year rather than one. So currently, the sick leave bank enrollment period is open from July 1st to September 30th. And we're hoping to catch more people and get more interest and involvement. If we have two different enrollment periods, one during the month of November and two during the month of April, yes, April. But just for reference, we would not do the November open period this year if you were to agree to it, because you wouldn't, it wouldn't give us enough time to make the change between the current open enrollment period, and then it would be closed for a month and then open again in November. So just to be clear, we would start that in April for the next open enrollment period. And I'm happy to turn this over to Mr. Jenkins and see if he has any more input from the sick leave bank folks.
Good evening, just two quick things. We did run this by the sick leave bank board, because they do have their own separate board. And all elected officials were in agreement for this. We're doing this basically for three different reasons, primarily to increase accessibility. Because as you'll see in the policy as well, that there has to be a minimum of 30% of our employees that participate in the sick leave bank for it to be able to run. Also with the two enrollment period, that gives the employees chances to build up those six sick days that are required for them to join the sick leave bank. Because if you're a brand-new employee, you're granted three days at the beginning, but then you would have to be at school for every single day for that first enrollment period for you to qualify. So opening it up again in April now gives you a second opportunity to join the sick leave bank board.
So we would like to bring that for you for a vote for the next board meeting. That was just as a, an information item for tonight. And then the second administrative rule that we would propose amending and really deleting is our COVID-19 leave policy. And that's obviously what we instated originally in the summer of 2020, redid it last January in 2021. It did not have a sunset date on it, because we didn't know when we would not be needing this policy any longer. We are not providing paid COVID leave from July 1st. We made that change, so we're no longer providing the paid COVID leave, simply because CDC, DAC regulations are all advising us to treat this as an endemic, more like the flu, than a pandemic as what we were dealing with. So simply just asking, hopefully not jinxing anything, but simply just asking to remove it from the policy manual and understanding that if we had to return to it, we could reinstate it if necessary, hopefully not. So we would bring that forward as a vote at the next meeting as well. Happy to answer any questions about either of those. And I know Dr. Milton is well-versed in the COVID leave policy, if you have specific questions about that. All right, thank you.
Next, on the information items, we have Lisa Johnson. Talk to us about the looming fourth quarter finance report.
Yes, Dr. Lance, board members, Mr. Price. This is a very early financial report since the year in June 30th. But it does kinda give you an idea of that we are within budget, we are, have collected what we anticipated. Even though we had lower state revenues due to lower enrollment, we were able to make that up with some other, in some other areas. So we're, it looks like our collections are gonna be okay. We are still, just to qualify the figures, we are still paying last year's bills, last year's timesheets, last year's purchase orders are being closed out, last year's grants. So there are and will be changes to these numbers. That's why I say it's the very early report, just to kinda give you an idea that for sure we are within budget and it looks like we're gonna be okay on our revenue side. Anybody have any questions about it at this point? We'll have better numbers for you, I would think, September, October. We'll have things pretty much closed out.
The only, I'm sorry, Dr. Lance? The only question I had, Ms. Johnson, our enrollment, is it about 8,300? I think I read that somewhere. Our, excuse me, our student enrollment?
That, that's enrollment, that's not actual seats, bodies in seats yet. We're, we are, we did an account yesterday, we'll do another account tomorrow. You know, first day is not typically the best day to count.
Sure.
So we, we're short of what we had anticipated for budget, but we're gonna keep monitoring it, and I'm sure Mr. Price will be updating you as we get there.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, Dr. Cafaro, we were, we were asked to give a projection on enrollment, and it's hard before the first day of school. And so I had Mr. Frichette, who keeps up with our data, where were we three days before the first day of school last year? And we had 200 more registered this year than we did last year. And so when you look at the student, the number of students who are enrolled, it's, it's very close to that number that you just referenced. But the number of students who were in the seats yesterday were not there yet. So there will probably be more students who haven't, didn't start yesterday. They'll be coming sometime this week, there'll be more who register this week. But there will also be some who registered, who have moved someplace else, who have not completed the withdrawal process too. So it's still a very fluid number right now. I think our first official date that we have to submit is the 11th day. So we'll, we'll have a better number for you at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Giles. Good news overview.
Yes, sir, good news for sure. Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, Superintendent Price, district administration and staff, as well as guests. I echo the sentiments of many that have been shared so far over the past couple of days. We've gotten off to a great start this week in our schools. But I do say that the salute goes to our staff members, our teachers and our administrators who were hard at work during the summer, preparing for the past two days. So we thank them very much for what they've done. Much thought, work and professional learning went towards planning, preparing and implementing much of what we'll share with you this, this evening. Prior to that, it is important to note that valuable input and feedback were received from those groups in the spring of this past school year. And we use that input and that feedback towards planning and developing professional learning plans, determining our programs and evaluating the effectiveness of our professional development. I've said before, and I typically start all of my meetings or any type of data reviews with three questions. The first question is always, who are we? Our vision defines who we are, to prepare our students to be successful in their chosen pathway. The next question I typically use is, what do we have to do? That's our mission. Our mission is to provide all students with world-class knowledge, skills that prepare them for citizenship in a diverse society. Lastly, what are we going to do? So those are our goals. That's what directs us, and we pull these specifically from our strategic plan that many of you contributed to over the course of the past year. Without citing each one verbatim, please recognize that our elementary goals are representative of our pre-K through 5th grades in areas of reading and math. Next, our middle grades' goals are tied to SC-ready and SC-pass performance. And lastly, our high school scores are linked directly to college and career readiness indicators, along with end-of-course exam scores. Understanding our goals, we develop priorities that closely mirror that of the CCR Division of our State Department of Education. Our first priority is to build leadership and instructional capacity. What research tells us is that school principals are second to teachers when it comes to having an impact on student learning in a school. With that in mind, our priorities are providing the support and assistance to instructional leaders and to teachers that are needed to help build their capacities. Even more, it helps to aid in their own self-efficacy. Our second priority is strengthening our core curriculum. The core curriculum refers to the classes and coursework that all students are expected to have. Research-based strategies have proven that understanding the content and standards, teaching and assessing to the depth of those standards and identifying appropriate evidence of mastery will lead to improved student performances. What we've seen in our schools so far is evidence of improved instruction in our schools through use of the PLT models. Last year, Mr. Glover highlighted that model for us. In addition, intentional use of instructional time is key, and we shared with you our instructional frameworks that help us to monitor lesson, lesson planning and ensure that our teachers are on topic. Our third priority is strengthening interventions and support services. Understanding the effectiveness of MTSS, determining the appropriate interventions to use to meet the needs of our students, implementing behavioral systems, those are all part of those services that support our students. Provided for you is an outline of the professional learning activities and professional development that are, for the most part, district initiatives. Our schools do have the autonomy, I must say, to add as needed based on their personal data. Our professional learning goal areas are student achievement, again, instructional leadership and coaching, as well as professional, excuse me, professional development, planning, instructional delivery and assessment. The professional learning activities range from pre-K through 12 and encompass all content areas, as well as technology, special education and leadership development. What we'd like to do this evening very quickly, but it is important that we share this with you, we'd like to highlight three of those areas that are indicated. The first is from Mr. Stanley, principal at Plantersville Elementary. He will share with us about letters, a reading initiative that is wrapped around the science of reading. Next, Ms. Goodson, principal of, excuse me, of Rosemary Middle, will highlight the changes they have made to PBIS to help improve their behavior management system. And Mr. Stone, principal of Georgetown High, will tie the academic and behavioral pieces together and show how the use of data walls impacts student performance. Mr. Stanley.
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Lance, Superintendent Price and other distinguished members of the board. Of course, I was, I would say, violent and told by Dr. Giles to come and present to you. Of course, I've never told her no. But I'm presenting the letters program. Letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And currently, we have several schools, Andrews, McDonald, Plantersville and Sampit, that are in the letters program. And letters help educators understand how students learn to read and write, recognize the reasons why some students struggle and determine what must be taught to increase student success. And it is based, like she said, in the science of reading. This is a two-year course of study given by the State Department of Education. So it's funded by a two-year course of study. We had our first one last Tuesday, a six-hour training online that those schools participated in. And just to be a little bit more clear on what's science of reading, and I know that Patty, Ms. Hamel and Dr. Lance can attest to this, sometimes you fell on the side of what is best, teaching phonics or whole language or meaningful emphasis. Now, I will say, in our district, we've kinda fell on the meaning emphasis wide. We did the shared reading, guided reading, independent reading. Those are things that our teachers know how to do. But going through this training, we're doing more phonemic awareness. And I will say, our teachers of the last couple of years have been doing a lot of things with phonics, with our letters. with phonics with our letters program. So they were very able to participate in that program. But a lot of things with the letters program is, we didn't get a lot of phonics in our teacher preparation program. So I'll just be honest with you, some of our teachers didn't know how to teach that. But they're learning now over the last two years, they're doing a very good job of it. And it's not whether you land on phonics side or whole language side, it's intertwined both of them. So science of reading, that's basically what we're doing in those schools. It's really based in research. I think if you look at, the State Department is sponsoring this program, teachers get a stipend for it, and it's really coming out of the work that's been done in Mississippi, places like that with science of reading. And I think our teachers, when they had that training, even though it might have been exhausting, they came out because they learned something. They were very enthusiastic. It's a two-year study, like I said, and they learned something, and I think that will help our teachers become better teachers at teaching reading and make our students more skilled readers. So thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, and guests. Mr. Price. I'm proud here proudly to talk about the RMS journey with PBIS as a middle school. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support, and it is an evidence-based framework for supporting students' behavioral, academic, social, emotional, and mental health. PBIS is a proven framework for improving social, emotional competency, academic success, and school climate. However, after the year everyone witnessed last year, Mr. Barry and I knew we needed to do something different, so we set on the journey to revamp our PBIS framework to recreate a positive, predictable, equitable, and safe learning environment so that our students and staff could be successful for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So our first step was to study our discipline data to find trends that needed to be addressed. Then we restructured our PBIS team. We hired a consultant, Ms. Kim Allen, with the leading-up consulting group, to work with us to assist us with restructuring our behavior matrix and to help us approach the teaching of the framework in a totally different manner to address the needs of our current students. As you can see, this is our old matrix, which was a two-page overwhelming expectation we gave our students and faculty, now to a one-page kid-friendly expectation chart, and that should be coming up soon.
I don't have that.
Oh, she didn't have that, sorry. Well, I have a copy if you like, so it went to a nice student-friendly version. In our studying, we also noticed that we were more focused on the consequences than teaching the expectations and building the positive relationship with our students. So we have developed a year-long plan to teach expectations daily and to lessen the consequences, not eliminate them, but provide more teachable moments. For example, this week, we are being intentional with teaching our school-wide expectation in each class using the acronym of PRIDE, Responsible, Respectful, Positive, Dependable, Integrity. Another area we had to focus on is teaching our students voice level, the appropriate voice level in certain situations. So we created a visual for our middle school students using memes, something that they always are using, to help them relate to what does it mean with your voice levels in certain situations. So in summary, we are excited at Rosemary about the PBIS journey that Mr. Barry, my assistant principal, is spearheading, as we are not only teaching our standards, but teaching expectation, suitable expectations for school. Thank you.
Dr. Lance, I've got a quick question.
Oh, sure.
What what? I like these programs, they're intriguing, they're interesting. What I want to know, whatever happened, Patty, whatever happened to Flip Flipping?
Capturing kids' hearts.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that was a really, really good program. And, you know, a lot of these things that you're presenting are very, they're kind of interwoven, intertwined, that's good. But I just, I don't know, I just thought the capturing kids' hearts was something very good, too.
They're still around, Dr. Cafaro.
Are they?
We have some schools who are still CKH, Capturing Kids' Heart Schools, sponsored by Flip Flipping.
Very good.
They're still around.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Lance, Chairman Lance, School Board members, Mr. Price, district personnel. First of all, I want to thank you for all that you've done to provide us with the support that we need to be able to prepare our students. They are the future. And we start talking about the vision and mission of Georgetown County School District. It's more than test scores. It's personal. It is more about relationships and developing those relationships, and that's where the education process really starts to flourish. So in talking about data walls, I do want to share with you, all four high schools, we do have data walls. How we came about our vision for our data walls are different. Some of the strategies that we use or the data that we use to display the data, collect the data, analyze the data, might be a little bit different, but we all do use them. Last summer, Mr. George and I was able to present at SREB concerning data walls, had great response to this past, I guess, last month. We went to Dallas with SREB and presented there on data walls and really talked about our journeys and kind of what we've we were able to, we've been able to experience as as principals, as administrators, but also about our teachers and what the data wall process has done with our teachers, and more importantly, even our students. So I do have a few PowerPoint slides, but I do not have them over there with Ms. Christie. But basically, what I want to share with you is where this journey started with us. We started first, we did a book study on make or break year. We did that initially administratively at Georgetown High, then we passed it down into our department heads, our leadership team. We read the book, analyzed the book, discussed what we were able to find based off the research that the book discussed. An alarming statistic, eighty-one percent, eighty-one percent of ninth graders who are promoted on grade level will earn their high school diploma within four years. That's pretty powerful. When you start talking about Algebra I test scores, English II test scores, biology scores, U.S. history scores, those are important. They are. But having that student experience the academic success, the social and emotional success that they need early on in high school is probably the most profound and positive experience they can have. So when we when we read the book and we've and we identified, number one, that eighty-one percent would graduate from high school in four years if they're promoted on grade level, the second-largest indicator was attendance. So we started the process across the four schools about three years ago, four years ago, depending on, you know, which school you're talking about. COVID hits. So one of the major indicators that's going to help us provide support for students, attendance. If you recall, the attendance expectations were kind of relaxed, if we're being honest about that. So the attendance expectations were relaxed. Then the delivery system. Students had the opportunity to choose virtual or in person. I can tell you not even close that the students who chose in-person instruction at Georgetown High School outperformed those students who chose the virtual route. That that statistic is glaring as well. So I believe that the academic support for in-person was extremely powerful, extremely important, but also that social and emotional connection of having that person face-to-face with them, as opposed to sitting behind a computer. So we began that process, I seek, I had to rely on Dr. Giles, because I said, listen, she has experience at elementary, middle, and high. I said, what do you do? Make it personal. Take the student's picture and put it on the card. It's no longer a name, it's a face. So if you come to Georgetown High and you go in our data wall, if you go in our data room, we call it the watching wall, we wanted to change the name of it. So we call it the watching wall now. It's located very intentionally in the mailroom at Georgetown High. Reason being, teachers don't have an option. They see it every day. When they go check their mailbox, they're reminded of their kids. So we made it personal, we started analyzing the data using the District Data Analysis Protocol. We had those discussions. Something I had to learn myself, when we started the process, I didn't want to give it up, because it's, you know, as a as a school leader, it becomes a, it's a mission. You take the success and you take the lack of success personally sometimes. So when our kids fail, I think, yeah, that's kind of, you know, it's personal to me, I take it to heart. So I was advised, you need to give a little bit of it up, it'll help your teachers. So I did. We developed a data team. It's comprised of five teachers. We did that this past year, they did an amazing job, provided professional development for our teachers. We trained them how to track data. At Georgetown High, we use a system called RTI Stored, which we learned through our leader, through some professional development with our leader. It allows us to triangulate some of the things Dr. Giles was talking about. So you have the academics component, it tracks academics. It tracks the attendance component. As teachers check attendance every night at midnight when Power School rolls over, RTI Stored rolls over as well. So it collects that data. And it also tracks the discipline as discipline is entered into Power School. So as a teacher submits a discipline referral in ABE, when it gets processed, it enters into that same system at midnight. So by utilizing that system, we're able to update our our tracking of how we do our students, and it's MTSS-aligned. So the students that are faring well, our teachers place them in the green section on our data wall, our watching wall. Students who are slipping a little bit, haven't yet gotten into really bad trouble, we place them in the yellow section. And students who are struggling academically, we do place them in the red section for for intense remediation. So the data has led us to make a significant change at Georgetown High for this year. We are going through something that is, we called it, you know, I think, Dr. Hamel earlier presented on Bulldog Time, I think, I can't remember what, Waukesha College there, or Andrews or Carver's Bay, but we called ours Bulldog Time. Well, this year, we're going to, we're converting over into a fifty-minute single lunch with built-in academic remediation at Georgetown High. So we started that process yesterday, went well, today went well, so, you know, that's, it's something, it's a data-driven decision that we made for us, that's that's specifically designed to meet the needs of our kids. So I'm welcome to answer any questions you may have regarding the data wall and kind of how that works. Thank you.
All right, so those are just three highlights. I probably could have every principal stand before you and share their highlights of where we're moving with our academics department. Certainly, I am transparent, we do have work to do as far as our data shows, but I must say that we're making a lot of progress, and I'm very pleased with the performance in our schools led by our team, our team members. I can't stand and take ownership, but I must say that our team is very versed in taking us to the next level. So any questions you have as far as academics? Thank you.
Just a reminder that we are having a little session. Right after these quick comments from the board superintendent. Board members, any comments?
Yes. I'd just like to take a minute to say, went out to McDonald School yesterday morning, it was beautiful, just watching the kids and the parents in there and out, and everybody interacting and just having a great time. But the one thing I wanted to recognize is, the gentleman, he's been around that school for years, his children are not there anymore, but he's a school dad, neighborhood dad for years, Trannis Parker, and he doesn't do it for recognition, he reads to the kids, he's there greeting all the kids and the parents yesterday morning, and I just wanted to commend him for continuing to do what he do, not only for the school district, but for that community. And he's well-known by all the parents and the students there. Thank you.
No, sir, it's short, I promise. Thank you, Dr. Lance, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Happy second day of school. We have had a great beginning to our new school year, and in visiting schools around the district yesterday and today, I have seen hundreds and hundreds of smiling, happy faces from students and staff members alike. It's my hope that we will be able to sustain the positive momentum we have enjoyed for the for the entire school year. While we have increased our efforts to ensure safety throughout our district, you have also seen our academic goals for the year as well. We all stand committed to making this another great school year in Georgetown County School District. And on one exciting note, we received word late last week that the Waukesha High Concert Choir, under the direction of Ms. Sylvia Plyler, has been selected to represent South Carolina and perform at the 2023 eightieth anniversary of the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade and Commemorative Ceremony. So congratulations to the warriors for this amazing accomplishment, and best wishes as the planning efforts will now begin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Last chance.
Make a motion to go into executive session at this time.
All right, it's been moved, probably second. Take a break and go into executive session. All those in favor, by saying aye. As I said, we are now in executive session. Come out of executive session. Those who are in favor, by saying aye. As I said. And finally, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved in probably second. Then we adjourn. All those in favor, by saying aye. As I said. Have a good evening.